Ready? All right, we'd like to thank everyone that's come out here today. This is in response to our board meeting last night that we had, and I think some of the maybe misinformation or clear up some of the controversy that's been around the college tuition, free college tuition for Tassau County as offered starting last year. And to give you a little bit of background, last year, Russell County, Buchanan County, and Tassau County did a free college tuition program to Southwest Community College. Dr. Wright and his staff was very instrumental in helping us through those logistics. And as of any program, it is very hard to, when you are doing it the first time, to know exactly where that's going to end. One of the things that's been said many times, how do you measure success? Is success meeting the budget that you set? Or is success actually succeeding that budget? Because more students came and is getting higher education, which we know is going to let them earn a higher income and be greater contributors to our community and our society. And fortunately or unfortunately, however you want to look at it, that's what happened in this program. So last year, and for the metrics that we looked at, for probably the last four years, we've had around 110 seniors from Tassau County High School that has came to Southwest Community College. And that's what we based our numbers on. And I think last year, we had about 139, so almost 30 students that came. And the retention rate actually improved. So when we was looking at our budget, and any of you that's followed our Tassau County budget for the last four years have known that we've had a struggle with the loss of coal, gas severance, we've lost some of our population, machinery and tool tax, just different things that has contributed to that. And so when we was looking at the budget this year, we also got a call from Dr. Wright and said, hey guys, you did great, but you've got some more money that you owe because the tuition is more. We did have a very generous donor, local lady, that decided to match us, Tassau County. That was a very big thing that we looked at. Anytime that you can get a private donor onboard, it is very helpful. But long story short, we was about $45,000 in the deficit when that we started this year with the college tuition program. And that is what we had budgeted, about $40,000, $50,000, I think, Mr. Young, in the budget for 2020 to start this program. So looking forward, if it was that successful again, we was looking at about $100,000 over budget that we had. We started this year out with about a $2.9, $2.7 million budget deficit. We have created some very creative measures to try to get that in line. And as Mr. Young did a great job last night in presenting that budget, we feel like we do have a balanced budget that we can survive on, not thrive on, but survive on, hoping that this year will be a better year. Also, in February, a lot of the controversy was the marketing campaign in February that was talking about the free Tassau College tuition. And it was a push to get students to come to Southwest Community College. And in February, we was onboard with that. But we all know what happened in March. COVID-19 hit. In our early estimates, we are showing a $1 million hit to Tassau County's revenues that is directly related to COVID-19. You've probably read in the papers or seen the news that we did receive $3.5 million to help combat that. Unfortunately, we cannot use that money to replace revenue. So we cannot use that money to help even in this instance. We was hoping we could. That was why some of the delay was in the discussion last night. We was trying to find the money to be able to do this. So we had a discussion last night. Mr. Stacy, here on my left, is a part of the Budget Committee. And we said, we don't know how that we were going to be able to fund this, when the whole $45,000, we'll take the money that we had budgeted, pay us out of the hole, and we would just possibly suspend this tuition program. We also knew that there was 2019 graduates that had started. We felt an obligation that we had given them, if they started in 2019, we would definitely see them through for 2020. As soon as the meeting was over, there was a mass uprising, or whatever you want to call it. Different ones has emailed us, the board members, Mr. Young, Dr. Wright, his faculty. And they said, you know, here it is, June, tuition is due on Monday. If we would have known this, we possibly would have made other plans for our children. So we have been on the phone today with our board members, with Mr. Young, with the college. They have graciously been able to suspend those payments for six months and to give us time to try to figure out what we can do, hopefully get some answers with some of this COVID-19 money that has came both to the college and to the county. But we are going to make a commitment today to fund the 2020 seniors for at least the summer and the fall semesters. At the end of this year, we will, by December 31st, we are going to evaluate this and we are going to set guidelines going forward. That way, you have time to maybe make other decisions, whether to come to Southwest. Hopefully, at that time, we'll be able to figure out what we can do to continue this program. As many of you know, I was a champion of this program. Actually flipped Charlie on it this year, and he has had such success out of his own community in the Bluefield area, that he called me this morning and said, Travis, we have to do something. We feel like that these young people have made these decisions and the parents have not squirreled away, especially with the COVID-19 crisis, an extra $2,000 or $3,000, whatever that these semesters is going to cost. So we're making a commitment today to fund the 2020 seniors for the summer and the fall classes. And we will have to make some guidelines at the end of the year if we continue this program, that we hope we can. There is a lot of metrics we didn't even think about when we started this. There is several high-income families that their students may, their children may come over here, they're seniors, and they get a free college tuition. So we would just want to look at those and see what we can do. We definitely want to continue this, but with our current financial situation in Tassau County, we are really looking under every rock to see where we can get our funds. So I will let Mr. Stacy speak at this time, if he wants to add anything to that.
Well, I think the only thing we would want to add to that is probably to apologize to the folks. The one dynamic that I don't think the board had information of last night was that there were payments that were going to be due Monday morning. Our budget process, for those of you who are not familiar with it, we're required to advertise our budget, conduct a public hearing on our budget, which is what occurred last night. But we can't vote by statute on that budget for a period of seven days following that meeting. So we have a recess meeting that is set to June 25th. And on June 25th, we make the final decisions relating to the budget after receiving the benefit of the commentary from your community after the public hearing. So I will certainly say that it was very unfortunate for us that we did not realize that folks participating in this program would be counting on funding that would be delivered on Monday before our budget was even able to be approved. And I think that was just one of the many logistical details you have to work out with a program like this. As Travis indicated, I've been extremely proud to see the participation in this program. I did not vote in favor of this program because it was my impression at the time, I couldn't determine what it would cost Tassau County, and I couldn't determine where those funds would come from. We were hoping for a meal's tax. We are hoping for, you know, dedicated funding that can allow projects like this to have a guaranteed source of funding every year before you embark on them. Otherwise, you put yourself in the financial situation as we found ourselves here. If the government, if the Commonwealth of Virginia changes its funding, if any of your private partners change their position on funding, then the county is left holding the bag. And that's where I think you find the unfortunate situation where we are. I think our board is very committed that the folks who made decisions to stay in our community, and I cannot stress enough the importance of how many students who would have otherwise been packing up their car in August and leaving our community are now making a decision to stay here. And I think if there was one portion of this program that has caused me to take a second look, it was the fact of the number of students that will take advantage of staying here and getting their education if the right assistance is available. So that gives merit to the program. We have children that stay here, who may permanently stay here. For every person, with the exception maybe of Tommy, three of us up here, something made us come back to Tassau County and make our homes and bring our families here.
I got here as fast as I could.
We're glad to have you. So we're glad to see that there is a program, something that could be put in place that gets our young people to make a decision, even if it's one that's financially related. It gives them an opportunity to sow more roots in this community and potentially stay here. And that is fundamental to the future growth we have here in Tassau County, is to attract our young people, to get them to come here and want to stay here. So I think we owe the community an apology for the parents and the students that had obligations due Monday. We simply didn't know that. That was not information that was available to us that helped us make a decision, how are we going to do this? All the other budget concerns, as Mr. Hackworth has described, are very accurate. We have tremendous financial obligations. And for this program to survive the current economic crisis we're in, is going to require the will and the support of the community to support us as the governing body in trying to come up with ways to be able to fund that. Whether it'll be a permanent funding, I don't know, but I can tell you personally, as one member of this board, I feel it's our obligation for the students that made the choice to stay here. I think it is our obligation to support and find a way to make those students participate in this program the way they intended. If we can't fund it on a more permanent basis, then that will be one of the many difficult decisions this board and every board across the United States faces when you have the economic conditions that we have. Thank you.
And to echo what Charlie said, I think we all thought of the fall semester. And so we thought we had a few weeks before this would actually start impacting students and parents. And that was the delay, I guess, in doing that, knowing that we could not vote on the finalized budget June 25th. So miscommunication, and again, like Charlie said, we do apologize. And certainly was not the intent of any of the board members to not fund this program. Everyone is very passionate about doing that, including our administrator and the staff. It's simply, how do we do that? And so we are working diligently to find those sources. And if any of you have a rich uncle out there that wants to donate, we'll definitely take it. Mr. Young?
I'd just like to say that difficult times require difficult decisions. And a couple of weeks ago, the state made some difficult decisions in both funding for programs for community college and funding programs for our secondary school system. They took some serious cuts. We too have made serious decisions, difficult ones. We've cut law enforcement, we've cut our public school system, and we've deferred a lot of necessary projects. But it's clear that our board is determined to fund this project. And it will call for more difficult decisions at the end of this month. However, the board feels that they are obligated to the class of 2019 who have chosen to come here, and the class of 2020 who have chosen to come here, and we will find a way to fund the program for those two graduate years.
So I'm excited to be sitting up here with these folks because it takes a lot to come back and stand in front of a camera and to say, hey, you know, we've heard you loud and clear. So these are the folks that are your elected officials that have stood up and done just that. They've said, we've heard you and we want to take a different stance. As was mentioned, the program this past year was extremely successful for Tassau County and for the other counties that have the program as well. The numbers that Travis shared with you were pretty amazing. I mean, a 25% increase in students coming to Southwest. Oftentimes, when you have a free tuition program like this, you have folks that didn't think college was ever an option for them, and they come to campus, they fill out an application, they learn that in fact their funds can be covered through a Pell Grant or something like that. But it makes college get on their radar. So we are excited to have the program. We're excited to see that it's moving forward. We are thrilled to be able to essentially delay the billing cycle for six months to give folks time to be able to see if we can find a way to ease that pain. But it sounds like today, they've made that commitment, so it's an exciting day. We're glad to be a part of it. We think it will grow. We expect to see everybody that was on Facebook that was upset about it, we've taken your names, we expect to see your students here. No, I'm just joking. But we do want to see folks continue to come to Southwest. We've experienced growth the last few semesters, and that's not what community colleges across the state can say. But we here at Southwest can say that we are among the few that are continuing to grow. So we're pretty excited about that. We think this program and the others like it do just what we need it to do. It makes college a reality. So we're excited. Hope everybody has a great day, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that we may have later on.
Jay, do you guys have any questions?
Can I say something else before you get to questions, and then you can use it wherever you need to? We do have, it was mentioned, we had a gracious donor. And I want to make sure that there was some press information that our team can get to you, where we made a press release back earlier in the fall. But the estate of Sam McCall, handled by Priscilla McCall, is the person responsible for that donation. And she too has committed the match of up to $50,000 for this next academic year. So she did that this year. She's committed to do that again this next academic year. So we want to make sure we recognize and thank her as well. Sorry, you had some questions?
Come on up. Wherever you guys get comfortable, come on up.
I just have some things to clarify about this all. So just to summarize, so for now, the students that were already in the program, they're not going to be affected, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
So what's up in the air is people that are considering signing up for the...
For class of 20, I'm sorry. As I understand it, class of 2019, we're going to pay for them. Class of 2020, we're going to pay for them at least first semester.
The first semester. That's correct. Summer and the fall. And then by the end of 2020, at the end of this year, we will evaluate, we'll have those numbers, and we will see what the county's financial situation is. And we expect there will be some, I guess, requirements that we will have to put on this program. Because I don't think any county can afford just to have an open-ended tuition policy. So we want to make sure it's very fair, and we want that to maximize our money to the most available students. But we are committing to do the summer and the fall semester for the 2020 graduates. Does that answer your question?
Would it be like a GPA requirement, or is that just like a FAW for the scholarship?
We're looking at those things. We haven't made a decision exactly what that will be, but that definitely is one of the things we are looking at, yes.
How much does the program, just to go back over some points a bit, how much does the program cost the county each year? And was 2019 the first class to be able to do it?
Mr. Young, do you want to answer that?
We had estimates that it would be around $100,000 for the first year for the class of 2019. So we budgeted 50, keeping in mind that the donor was going to provide the rest. And it turned out that a mix of things happened. Either more people participated, or those who participated qualified for less federal and state assistance, meaning that we had to pick up the difference. So in essence, it came in, I believe, at about 185,000 instead of 100,000.
Yes.
Would you say that, like, loss of revenue specifically because of COVID-19 is the main reason that we're having to have these budget issues with the program?
Doesn't make it any easier. We're anticipating a loss of between $800,000 and $1 million in sales tax revenue. We won't know until we get our April sales tax figures back to true extent of what the shutdown costs us. And going forward, there's an expected overall economic decline, recession, that will probably reduce those numbers from what we had the year before. So yes, that's a big factor in all of our decisions, and many programs are up in the air.
If I could add to that one, I would think also, in addition, you've got a new program like this, one of the things that we couldn't know in advance is how much your citizens were going to be excited and want to participate in that. So I think this is almost a natural occurrence as a new program is announced and developed as to the level of participation. And for budgeting purposes, we had based numbers based on historic numbers of how many high school students from Tassau County normally attended Southwest as a potential projection of how many would likely do that. I think once word of this program got out to the students and perhaps to their parents, we had an even greater increase in participation, which is a great thing. It just changes the dynamics of the financing model that we went into the program with. So I think every year, you have to go back and adjust to say, okay, how many participated? And is that number going to consistently rise? And as it does, then it creates a budgeting concern for us because those are funds that have to be identified from somewhere and allocated for this particular program.
And Charlie, I would add that the, in tough economic times, oftentimes, community college enrollment grows, but we haven't gone through a pandemic to have that play out for us. And so while it's a tough economic time right now with high unemployment, we would typically expect to see an increase in student enrollment. So that 140 students that came from Tassau County last year to Southwest, we could see that grow now because of the tough economic times. We could also see that number grow because folks that had intended to go away to a four-year school may or may not think that it's a good thing to do now. And so the unknown is the tough one right now.
Another thing that was a factor in this was the governor had rolled out early, maybe in the fall, had rolled out a basically free tuition program for community colleges. And I think that was six or eight programs, mainly vocational, like nursing, I think, was in that category, welding, electrician, different things. And about a third of our seniors would have fell into that category. So when we was getting some of our numbers prematurely back, we knew those numbers were higher, but we were also banking on the governor, with his rollout of the free tuition, was going to cover that deficit. And when he made the announcement in probably April that he was going to redact that because of COVID-19, that really put us in a tailspin because that $50,000 or $40,000 we was counting on suddenly evaporated and landed in our lap. So that was another tough, you know, thing that COVID-19 actually, a byproduct of COVID-19 when he pulled that back. We're hoping that that's going to be revisited, possibly even next year. And if it does, that will help this program succeed. So any letters of support or to your representatives to try to push that for next year would definitely help this program succeed.
And I think one of the things that I saw parents were most upset about, they said their kids were heavily recruited to come to Southwest with the promise of having free tuition, and that this program has been heavily advertised on billboards and the news. So I guess when you guys started to put those requirements on the program, was that something that maybe your equipment will step back a little bit because you're not going to have, you know, as much money as you thought you would?
I think that's fair to say. We won't know what that looks like until we see what this enrollment year, but again, some sort of cap. You know, let's face it, if you are a six-figure income earner, you probably can afford to pay $2,200 per semester versus if you're a $30,000 annual income. So that's where we want to make sure the money goes to the most qualified. We're also looking at maybe putting an application deadline because a lot of people, it waffles, am I coming, am I not coming? And we need to know that early on so that we will know how much money that we have to budget for. I think right now, under the current laws or regulations, they can apply and come even up to Labor Day. So that really, right now, we don't know how many is going to be in the spring and fall, or the summer and fall, the fall semester because of that. So those are some of the things we're looking at, the requirements, the caps. And at some point, I'm sure we'll just have to settle on a dollar amount to say, this is like Ms. McCall did. She said, we've got $50,000, and so Tassau County may have to do the same thing. This is what we can dedicate to free college tuition for Tassau County seniors.
Are we looking at turning it into more of a scholarship opportunity rather than a grant for all seniors, really?
Possibly, yes.
And so you said that, so six months, you're delaying the billing cycle for six months. What needs to happen in that timeframe?
We need to find some money. With the end of the budget cycle, and Mr. Young, I've been on the board now for five years, Charlie for seven, nine years. It's kind of hard for, I guess, to get your head wrapped around it. We won't know what we have left until the last day of the budget cycle. So that is, it's just, it's rolling. So that is something that's always really the last minute, and we budget for, you know, reserves and different things like that. But that's one thing we really don't know. That's why that we had the discussion last night about this, because we just don't really know what that's going to end up. We know that it's not going to be pretty. And what we have budgeted, like I said, is a budget for survival for 2020, 21. We felt like we needed to do everything we could to bat in the hatches, make all the cuts we could because we know a lot of families are hurting due to the COVID-19, the uncertainty that's in the near future. So we're trying to be as easy as we can with any revenues that we may have to try to come up with.
That was a nice way of saying we don't want to raise your taxes.
I was going to say, I saw on your Facebook post that, you know, raising taxes is not something you guys want to do to fund this.
And, you know, obviously, people have been devastated with the effects of this. And the last thing as a governing body we want to do is impose a tax increase, even if it's one cent or two cents per hundred, it's an increase. And this just is not the time to do it. But so many of the comments that we received from parents this morning were the exact same thing. This is not the time to do this to the graduating class of 2020 who's just already been through the effects of this. So the simple answer is there's no good answers. There's no good solutions. We're responsible primarily for running the government in Tassau County, which consists primarily of police, education, water, sewer, roads, the functions that allow us to live here. As we add programs like this program, we have to get creative, and our people have to support us, you know, to say, you know, when we've mentioned the possibility of a two-cent tax increase and the response on Facebook is, we'll vote every one of you off the board, that's a direct indicator to us, no, they don't want to pay those increased taxes to have programs like this. So for us, the difficulty is trying to get from the people a concession if we want this program. And I'm the first to admit, it was far more successful than I thought. this program, and I'm the first to admit, it was far more successful than I thought it would be in Tazewell County, that you have to pay for that. And if our people are willing to do that, this isn't a difficult discussion. You add a tax somewhere, whether it was the meals tax we proposed, something and say, this money can be dedicated to fund this program if you like that one. We use similar approaches for our sheriff's department and fire and rescue and things that people find valuable. But here, we've not been able to find a way that people would accept an increase in their obligations so that we can provide programs like this. But it is, it's critical, and in this next six months, that's what we'll do. We'll go back and look at, what is this program really going to cost? We fought over this program knuckle to knuckle, almost literally, when we were talking to $50,000.
He acquiesced.
He did get the program on a four-to-one vote, I agree. It was a $50,000 budget item, that's not a huge item, and it yielded a huge fight. So, anything that goes north of $50,000 for the citizens of Tazewell County to commit to paying is going to require, you know, that same process. And that's where we'll go back in the next six months and say, what was the, how much do people appreciate it and use it? What benefits do we get from it? And once we see those, is our commitment able to be increased from the 50? And Dr. Wright, I wanted to make, and I'll make this publicly on Facebook later, to, you know, I had made a statement earlier this morning that the donor had pulled the funding as well as the Commonwealth. The donor didn't pull their funding, the donor said, I've committed to match 50,000 to your 50,000. Anything above that, which is where we were, they're not in a position to do. So, for the, if I misunderstood whether her funding for the initial 50 was there, then certainly I would apologize for that and say, you know, my understanding is, you know, that we didn't have the funding sources, be it the Commonwealth of Virginia or the private donor that we had, that Tazewell County was going to have to make up the difference of that in a timeframe we just didn't have.
If I could add something to that that I think's important for your viewers to understand is, unlike the federal government, we can't just print money. We can't just issue more debt and do the things we want to do. Every day for us is a choice as to how to spend the limited dollars we have. So, if the question is, do you raise some sort of revenue, some sort of tax to pay for something? Those are difficult questions. Either a tax will have to be increased or some other program will have to be cut, one of those two things. And we'll have to decide which one of those two things we're going to do, and if we cut a program, we'll have to decide which one that is.
Or more private donors.
Or more private donors.
That'd be the best case scenario. One thing too, that Mr. Young pointed out last night in the presentation, was Tazewell County, I've grown up, lived here all my life, and many people would say we are called Taxwell County. And when I got on the board and I started looking at the rates, we are actually the third lowest tax, real property tax in 13, the surrounding 13 counties.
West of Roanoke.
West of Roanoke. And that is, Buchanan County, of course, is the lowest, and they have the coal and severance tax. Withville is second, and that is because they have an interstate with restaurants that line both sides of the road, and they have the meals tax to rely on. So, Tazewell County has been very prudent in keeping their taxes low, and sometimes to their own demise because when it comes to funding programs like this, we literally are, we don't have the extra money to do that. So, I do want your viewers to know that we are the third lowest county west of Roanoke with our property taxes. And I don't know if that's to be proud of or not, because I guess it's based on the services you expect and the services that you receive. But that is something that Mr. Young brought in the presentation, I think was a very big eye-opener to a lot of people that did not understand that.
So, what, do you have a plan, or like where, what, where are you looking to get the money in the next six months? Like are there, do you have a plan of like who to reach out to, or grants to apply for, or where do we go from here?
Charlie owns a cattle farm, and he has several cows. So, I think that's...
One thing that's happened with the college and with the localities is the federal government has pushed down money to the states, the states pushed down money to the county. A $3.5 million check has been deposited into our account. Normally, that would have solved every problem we would have had, this press conference would not have occurred. But when they deposit that money, they tell you, by the way, you can't use it for anything except COVID-related expenses. They just don't tell you what a COVID-related expense is. So, again, the timing is what's made this situation horrible, but there is a fund of money, which I believe the federal government will begin to see the difficulties that the localities are facing. And not difficulties just like this program, we're talking difficulties in laying off police officers, teachers, cutting back critical services is faced all across the country. The requirement to release some of those COVID funds to help offset these losses so that localities don't suffer that kind of condition, I fully expect has to come from our federal government. And if that does, that may be one potential source that would allow us to have at least something to consider other than a tax increase.
When you're looking at a million-dollar revenue loss directly related to COVID-19, and we're talking $150,000 that it would take to fund this program, there's where the money is. So, you know, that is, in my opinion, that's a directly COVID-19-related, this was a debt that we incurred basically before COVID-19. If COVID-19 had not happened, we would have potentially a million dollars more in our revenues, and like Charlie said, this press conference would have never been happening. But the federal government is really good about giving you money, and then six months later, giving you a rulebook that says, okay, here's the rules, how you can spend it. So, it's very difficult, and of course, we do not want to over, spend the money, and then come back in six months and say, oh, you shouldn't have spent on that. Then we have to find the money at that point to pay it back. So, we're trying to be very careful in that, and that was one of the questions that the college was asked, and we asked of our legal team to reach out and to see if this could be one of those expenses that we could use that money for. And the answer was, I don't know. So, there's where we're at.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.